Thank you, Mr Mayor. Should the fire alarm sound, County Council staff will assist and will direct us to the muster point, which is the courtyard outside the Great Hall located to the left as we exit this building. Please can I also remind everyone to indicate in the usual way by standing when wanting to address the meeting. Mr Mayor, we'll call your name when it is your turn to speak. Please switch your microphone off as soon as you've finished speaking. May I also remind you to put mobile phones on silent and can I advise you that this meeting will be streamed live to the council's YouTube channel where the recording will remain thereafter. Please can we now commence the broadcast?
Please can I welcome everyone to this meeting of the council in the council chamber at Castle Hill Winchester. Welcome especially to members of the public who have submitted questions to the council and to those residents who have joined us this evening to present their petition. The first item of business this evening are the minutes of previous meetings of the council. Members, the minutes of the ordinary meeting of council held on the 16th of July 2024 and the extraordinary meeting of the council held on the 28th of August 2024, which is set out on pages five to 12 of your agenda. Are these agreed as a correct record? Thank you. The next agenda item is disclosure of interests. Are there any disclosures of interest to be made regarding the business before us this evening? Right, thank you.
Thank you. I disclose a non pecuniary and non prejudicial interest. I'm a county councillor, but I don't think it's relevant to this particular paper tonight.
Thank you. I need to declare a potentially pecuniary interest in agenda item six, so I will leave the room when that item comes up.
Becca. Councillor Todd?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I also need to declare a personal but non prejudicial and non pecuniary interest as a member of the county council.
Councillor Wallace?
Thank you. I'd like to make the same declaration, please.
Right, thank you. Right, the next agenda item is announcements. Members, my mayoral year continues to be busy and I'm attending many events across the district. On the 13th of October, it is the annual Law Sunday Cathedral Service, to which you are all invited. If you have yet to confirm your attendance, please do so with the mayor's secretary because we need to get the necessary arrangements sorted out as soon as possible. On the 22nd of October, it's the Winchester University's graduation ceremony and I will be attending also the traditional Winchester Round Table Fireworks Night and Bonfire Night on the 9th of November. And then finally, on Sunday, the 10th of November, it is the Remembrance Sunday Service at Winchester Cathedral. And on the following Monday, on the 11th, there will be a two-minute silence on the steps of Westminster, of Winchester Guildhall at 11am on the 11th of November. And now, I'd like to draw my attention to my forthcoming charity events. On the 22nd of September, there is a fundraising lunch at the Gandy Restaurant in Winchester, right opposite the Guildhall. The following day, and on the 4th of October, there's going to be a mayoral-themed guided walk in Winchester, ending at Abbey House with an opportunity for tea with the mayor. And finally, on the 12th of October, there will be a Trafalgar Celebration Sea Shanty Evening. And this will include traditional sea shanties by the well-known Southampton Salty Dogs Shanty Crew and a lecture by a senior naval officer, Admiral John Lang no less, during the interval. And I would encourage you all to buy tickets for these events and to persuade your family and friends to do likewise. Mayor's Charity's website, if you go to the Ticket Source, Mayor's Charity website, you can purchase tickets and find details for all of these. Now, Mr Macebearer, thank you for accompanying me this evening. Right, leader, do you have any announcements?
Yes, I do. Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's not long since the last full council, but I think it's important that I report on developments relating to devolution discussions within the county. On August 30th, an expression of interest was submitted by the Hampshire and Solent upper-tier local authority leaders to the Ministry of Health, sorry, the Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government, looking at a combined authority arrangement which, quote, "respects existing boundaries" and would include the area covered by all four authorities that signed the expression of interest. They have also asked for details of the powers and funding which come both with and without a mayor for the combined authority in order to make the case for regional economic benefit through regional political alignment. It is a very outlined proposal, although confirmation of the proposed area is a helpful step forward and was followed by a discussion at the Hampshire and Isle of Wight Informal Local Government Association meeting on September 2. Separately, I've been talking to the leaders of Southampton, Portsmouth and Hampshire, as well as fellow district leaders, to make sure the interests of our district are properly represented as more detailed discussions progress. While I recognise that we are likely to want devolution and consideration of specific area issues within any combined authority, it would be hard to see how any solution that split up Hampshire and broke our links either to the north or to the south of the county would benefit our residents and this council. One particular question relates to the role of districts in future governance. This was a point previously raised at the ministerial briefing to council leaders in July, where ministers talked a good game about the potential role of districts but didn't provide much detail. There's since been a question asked in Parliament by Daisy Cooper MP on September 4, again asking about the role of districts, and Jim McMahon, the minister responsible, said that we should expect to see a new devolution framework which will set out in more detail the role district councils can play. As soon as we have anything more detailed, I will discuss with you what approach will be in the best interest of our residents, businesses and the wider district. Secondly, and on a more local note, I'm pleased to announce that we have achieved practical completion of the new 3G pitch at the football ground in Hillyaway, which is the home venue of Winchester City FC. The 3G pitch replaces the club's previous grass pitch and will also be used by Winchester City Flyers Girls and Ladies Teams and Winchester Youth Football Club, as well as local community use schools, external partner clubs and holiday clubs for organised sessions as well as private hire. Facilities such as this enable our residents to live healthy and fulfilled lives with new opportunities, in particular for female coaches and players. It was funded by a Football Foundation grant of over 1.1 million, Winchester City Council Community Infrastructure levy funding of 300,000 and a contribution from Winchester City Football Club itself. Subject to ground grading assessment next week, the first competitive fixture using the new pitch will be on Saturday, the 28th of September, for the club's FA Cup third round qualifying fixture versus Weymouth. We wish them good luck.
Thank you. Chief Executive, do you have any announcements?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Good evening, members. I have apologies for tonight's meeting from councillors Vivian Achwell, councillors Bennett, Morris, Scott and Warwick. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Right, the next agenda item is item four, questions from members of the public. Welcome again to members of the public who are here this evening and who have submitted questions for the council to answer. Now, understand, we have received one question for this evening's meeting. Please can members of the public read out their submitted question as set out on the order paper, which has been published on the council's website. Can I now call upon Mike Slin, please? Could you address the meeting using the microphone and a reminder that following the response given by the Cabinet member, you may also ask a supplementary question that must arise directly out of the original question or the reply?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm accompanied by my colleague Nigel, who is from, both of us are from the Kingsbarton Residents' Association. And in order to help city councillors understand our question, I have sent them a copy of the petition report that we've prepared. So my question is, in excess of 3,200 residents have approved our petition, which states that we call on Winchester City Council and Hampshire County Council to reopen Andover Road as a requirement for the approval of the Sir John Moore Barracks redevelopment. Can you please confirm that the city council will include consideration of this requirement in the consultation period of the local plan? Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to call on the leader to respond, please.
Thank you very much indeed for your question. The draft local plan, the so-called Regulation 19 Plan, is currently out for consultation. So the consultation period has started and is underway. It includes policies for Sir John Moore Barracks and for Kingsbarton in the section of the plan that deals with development allocation for Winchester. Currently, those policies do not require a requirement, include a requirement to reopen the Andover Road, since the strategic transport assessment that we had to commission as part of the local plan process did not require it. And legally, we have to have robust evidence before being able to require a developer to take on this kind of obligation. Any member of the public can respond to these policies. And at the close of the Regulation 19 consultation at 23:59 on October 13, officers will review all the consultation responses the council receives about the Regulation 19 Plan and will provide a summary of the issues arising to the inspector. At this stage in the process, the city council is able to summarise the issues raised in the consultation, but is not legally able to directly consider this requirement. The Regulation 19 Plan is locked and it is not possible to change it within the timetable set out by central government. The only person who can recommend changes from this point forward is the planning inspector who reviews our local plan submission. The inspector will have access to each representation received, and this will include any representations asking that Andover Road be reopened as a requirement for the approval of the Sir John Moore Barracks redevelopment. The decision as to whether to review this issue will legally be a matter for them.
Thank you. So.
Thank you. Would you like to ask a supplementary question, please?
Thank you, yes. So we have provided the robust information that you require in the report on the petition. So please, could you just confirm that you will inform the planning inspector for the local plan of our petition and that over 3,200 residents have signed that petition? Thank you.
A response, please?
We will not be able to do that unless somebody responds to the current consultation and sets out that argument. So the only way in which information goes into the planning process from this point onwards is through the formal Regulation 19 consultation. There is no other way for information to be provided or for issues to be raised. So I did highlight this before when you asked a question at Cabinet. It is completely open to any resident within the district to make that submission, but they do have to respond to the Regulation 19 consultation, setting out that information. There is no other way in which it will reach the inspector.
Thank you, Councillor Todd, and to Mike Slin for your question. Please can I remind you that your question and the answer will be published on the council's website with the minutes of this meeting. Now, you are of course very welcome to stay for the remainder of the meeting and you're invited to be seated on the public gallery if you would like to do so. An officer will help you. Right. Agenda item five is petitions. And the petition before us this evening is as set out in the council agenda. I would like to welcome Janet Berry and Jenny Stables, representing the Highcliff Community Forum, who I understand are to present their petition to council. Firstly, I understand there's an error on the agenda before us and your petition does in fact contain 353 signatures. Apologies for this. Anyway, once again, could I thank you for coming along this evening to speak on this item. And I would remind you that you have three minutes to introduce your petition, the details of which we have all read. Please, could you address the meeting from the microphone, using a microphone, please?
Thank you for the opportunity to present this petition about space being provided for a community hub to serve Highcliff and the local area in any redevelopment of the Bar End Depot site. We hope the council will consider asking the site's developer to create this space to help meet the needs identified in the Highcliff Community Plan around setting up a community-run hub and shop and offering new social and other activities for everyone in Highcliff, but with a particular emphasis on children and young people. Activities highlighted in the plan included art classes, dance classes, holiday clubs for children, a youth club, scout and guide groups, choirs and a social club for older people. Since then, other opportunities have been identified and local people have expressed additional ideas. For example, a sample survey amongst 20% of signatories to this petition has identified support for facilities such as a community cafe, a refill shop, library area, community fridge, outdoor space and workshop areas and activities around education, training and films. The Highcliff Community Plan and the Bar End Design Framework are cited by the council as key documents informing the redevelopment of the depot site. A multi-purpose community space, including a youth zone and ancillary facilities on a small part of the site, would enable the aims of those documents to be achieved. If further space could be provided, the boxing club could be co-located here with a permanent home. This could open up additional youth opportunities. We understand that the council is keen to include a convenience store in the development. A community hub alongside this would help to build a real sense of neighbourhood, which residents of any new homes on the site will be joining. Whilst there has always been a lot of enthusiasm for such a hub, with many residents still keen to volunteer in it, the difficulty has been finding the space to create this hub in Highcliff. The depot site appears to be the final chance where land is available to provide this facility and enable the community plan to be achieved. A community hub would help to strengthen the sustainability and resilience of the Highcliff community. It would create an exciting opportunity to work collaboratively with hubs and their communities in other parts of Winchester. I do hope that this request can be accommodated. Thank you.
Sorry, do excuse me. I'll get used to this one day. Thank you for your statement. I would invite you to return to your seat. And could I now call on the leader to respond, please?
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I would like to thank Janet Berry for bringing this petition this evening. It's an important question relating to an important decision and raises important issues for consideration. She touched on several issues, as well as the issue of a community hub. Janet Berry touched on the issues of a boxing club and youth work as well, and I think it's important that these factors are considered, but they're not necessarily part of the same decision. Indeed, it's very important to us to enable the boxing club to have bigger facilities, but the depot is not the only way to do it and officers are meeting the club shortly to explore other options. Similarly, youth provision is a very important issue, the balance between detached youth work and fixed-location youth clubs and a wider strategic view across the district. The chief executive and I are meeting the chair and chief executive of Youth Options shortly, the provider of youth work across our district, across Hampshire, to discuss priorities across the district. When it comes to community provision on the Bar End site, there are a range of factors that I think need to be considered. The first is how this request and the similar reference in the 2016 Community Plan relate to the many consultations that have taken place since the Community Plan was agreed. The two rounds of consultation for the KGV Pavilion, which concluded, quote, "KGV is a central point for Highcliff residents to gravitate and meet." Community feedback called for the KGV Pavilion to be available for community purposes and for there to be a community room. KGV is now built at a cost of £4 million and available for community use. The work done on the Bar End... The work done on the Bar End Design Framework, again heavily consulted on, which explicitly identified the option of community space in redeveloped pavilions but not at the depot. The local plan Regulation eighteen consultation, which asked about our plans for the depot site and which had no representations from the community for community space on the depot site. And the consultation for the Bar End Depot site itself in March and November twenty-two, which highlighted the convenience store as the highest priority for the local community. And while we need to be mindful of the Community Plan, it's important to note quite how out of date some elements of it are. The Community Plan, for example, makes absolutely no reference to the leisure centre even existing, since this was not planned at the time that it was agreed, and makes no reference to any prospect of community space in the KGV Pavilion. Both of these are important considerations that postdate the agreement of the Community Plan. And the reference in the plan to investigating the possibility of setting up a community-run hub and shop went on to say that having a shopping facility was the highest priority out of a list of twenty-two factors that would most improve the area. So the second question I have, that I think we need to consider, is what trade-offs would be appropriate in order to fulfil this request? Should we, for example, plan to scrap the proposed convenience store to make space for this community space? When our other consultations, including the original Community Plan consultation, say that a convenience store is by far the biggest priority for local residents? Should we cut the total amount of social and affordable housing when there is such a desperate need for this in our city in order to make space for this community facility? A further question relates to how does this relate to the question of community provision and the spending of council funds across the district. Stanmore, for example, is more than three times bigger as an estate than Highcliff, and its church, church rooms, and community hall are all reaching the end of their usable lives. Should this be where we dedicate our funds? And before further funding in Highcliff, we need to look at the situation more widely, including the provision of facilities in comparable or, in some cases, much, much larger estate areas, such as Stanmore, Winnell, Week, Alsford, and Bishopswaltham. Some people have raised the idea of using community infrastructure levy to maybe enable this kind of project. Let's be absolutely clear, Highcliff has had more community infrastructure allocated than anywhere else in the city and district. Forty per cent of district spending is in Highcliff, while the St Michael ward has generated five per cent of district SILL. Now, it's very important to note that that spending has served a district-wide purpose. It's provided a fantastic new leisure centre, one of the very best in the entire country, and it's provided a fantastic new pavilion with community space as part of it. But it is, so it's important to note, though, that there are seven wards, two inside and five outside the city, that have generated more community infrastructure levy, in some cases, three or four times more, and all of them have had less spent in their area. So do we consider it fair, looking on a district basis, that Highcliff should have further money allocated after so much resource has been put into the area, even if it meant scaling back our plans in other parts of the city and district? These are all important matters to consider, Mr Mayor. And so what I propose is that the points raised in this petition are included in the Cabinet report of October the fifteenth, in order that the Cabinet can consider them as part of its decision in respect of the site. That report will be considered by the scrutiny committee on October the third, giving the members of that committee the chance to probe these ideas in more detail and an opportunity to present their views on the matter in the petition as well, if they wish.
Thank you, councillor Todd. There is now an opportunity for a general debate on this matter, on the matter raised in the petition.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First, I'd like to start by paying tribute to Janet for her tireless campaigning for the people of Highcliff in my ward of St Michael. Her passionate advocacy really helps us, her ward members, me, councillor Aaron, councillor Murphy, make sure that this council hears the views of our residents loud and clear. I've spoken to thousands of people in the ward over the last few years and agree that the Bar End Depot site is one of absolute paramount importance. The current site has lain derelict for a number of years, most recently having been an MOT testing station and a temporary storage for, I think, this council's vehicles. A quality long-term development at the site is absolutely critical to the continuing flourishing of Highcliff, Bar End, and the wider town area. A good design will complement the fantastic sports facilities that we heard about at the leisure centre and the King George the Fifth Pavilion, which I was pleased to be at the opening event of about a month ago. These are fantastic facilities for our residents. Together, we can really make, which together can really make Bar End and Highcliff a real hub of activity in our city. As for the final make-up of the site, I understand from councillor Todd's comments as well as others, that there's a public procurement process. But I would agree with Miss Berry that it's critical that the final development is absolutely right for the people who live in the area. What I've heard repeatedly from residents is that it's critical the new site does include the shop, as Miss Berry refers to. Living fifteen yards from the western boundary of this site, this is something I strongly support. While we have a fantastic twenty-four-hour shop on Bar End Road for the essentials, sadly its range of fresh goods and particular fruits does not manage, does not match its market late rein. I've completely cocked this up. Its range of fresh foods, particularly fresh fruit, does not match the market-leading range of disposable vapes and my range of flavours as well. So the other day, when I was making a plum and green gage crumble and ran out of plain flour, it's completely true, this was on Monday this week, I realised I couldn't actually get plain flour in the shop. But this keenly illustrates the point, the problem we have in Highcliff and Bar End, that we don't have fresh food, we don't have fresh fruit, we don't have fresh vegetables available. So I would absolutely support the provision of such a convenience shop in our local area, particularly as it's straight over the road from my house. So, in summary, it's absolutely critical that we listen to the people of St Michael ward to ensure that the site works for the people of Highcliff, Bar End, and the wider town area. So I thank you for the passionate advocacy you've done. I thank councillor Todd for listening and responding, and thank you for setting out the next steps in this process. And thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Reech. Right, I can't see any other hands raised. So I think we can, so I think we can now close the debate. Janet Berry, thank you very much for speaking. The leader has explained that the matter will be included in the Cabinet report on the fifteenth of October for decision, and in addition, the report will also be before the scrutiny committee on the third of October. Please contact Democratic Services for any further advice. And thank you very much for raising the issue, and if you wish to stay and follow the rest of the meeting, please do so. Indicate to an officer, and they will take you up to the public gallery. Thank you very much. Right, members, the next item of business this evening is Agenda item six, consideration and determination of the recommended minute of Cabinet held on the eleventh of September twenty-twenty-four. Mr John, could you please introduce?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Agenda item six is the recommended minute of Cabinet held eleventh of September twenty-twenty-four, and this is set out on your agenda and on page four of the supplementary agenda containing the draft minute of Cabinet held eleventh of September twenty-twenty-four. Report CAB three, four, five, nine refers, and this is also included in your agenda pack on pages thirteen to twenty-seven. Mr Mayor, please note that the recommendation for council to approve is recommendation one, which is to approve the necessary HRA capital budget to implement works on plant upgrades funded by and on behalf of Partnership for South Hampshire. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr John. Please, can I have a proposal for the recommended minute of Cabinet?
Mr Mayor, I would like to propose the recommended minute of Cabinet.
And do I have a second, please?
Yes, I'd like to second it, please, Mr Mayor, and I reserve my right to speak. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Westwood, if you'd like to introduce the paper?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. This paper is part of the longer journey that Winchester City Council is making to mitigate the impact of accommodation on the Solent and Itchin rivers. Nutrient mitigation can be achieved in a number of ways, but this paper describes and seeks approval for one of the ways that Winchester City Council will be doing this. This is the upgrade of Winchester City Council's water treatment plants, managed within the housing revenue account portfolio, using grant funding. The purpose of the paper today is to seek permission for the council to approve an HRA budget of nine hundred thousand pounds to implement works on the water treatment plant upgrades, funded and on behalf of PUSH, and to establish working arrangements with PUSH to implement the project and manage the credits generated. To recap, in twenty-nineteen, Natural England issued advice to councils that require all overnight accommodation to mitigate for the nutrient pollution arising from development that may harm internationally protected sites, such as the Solent Special Protection Area. In twenty-twenty-two, further advice was issued to require the mitigation of phosphorus within the catchment to protect the Itchin. The council has a duty under the Conservation of Habitats Regulation twenty-seventeen to ensure that development does not worsen the situation. We are one of only twenty-six authorities across Britain to be required to mitigate both nitrates and phosphates. The impact of this is the current and future planning applications cannot be determined unless there is a mitigation scheme in place. The council must ensure that mitigation for all overnight accommodation in the catchment of the Itchin can be demonstrated for current applications, including the council's new homes and also for the emerging local plan. Supporting information in paragraph eleven-ten of the paper shows the impact of this on Winchester City Council and the credits this project will generate. We have been working with our partners in PUSH to meet this regional challenge. Winchester City Council has already upgraded two plants and generated credits. These credits were used to mitigate the council's own housing schemes. In July twenty-twenty-four, Cabinet approved the upgrade of four more sites, selling surplus credits to private developers. PUSH, through Faren Borough Council, has received a grant from central government to address nutrient neutrality across the PUSH region. PUSH will grant funds to upgrade further water treatment works in Winchester district. The credits being generated will be managed by PUSH and the income recycled into more projects. I'd like to thank the officers for working so diligently on this programme of works. To achieve this, the Cabinet recommends to council that it approves an HRA budget of nine hundred thousand pounds to implement works on the water treatment plant upgrades funded by the PUSH grant. Recommendation two, Cabinet also recommends that, subject to approval of that budget, Winchester City Council will accept PUSH grant funding of nine hundred thousand pounds, delegating authority to Strategic Director and Director Legal in consultation with Cabinet Member for Place and Local Plan to enter into the necessary agreements with Faren Borough Council, acting on behalf of PUSH, to receive the grant funds and establish working arrangements to implement the project and the credits generated. The PUSH Water Treatment Works Upgrade Project funding is in two tranches. The first tranche is a value of two hundred thousand pounds for feasibility and initial works. The second tranche is seven hundred thousand pounds for the implementation of further upgrades following the agreed business case with PUSH. To achieve this, the procurement of the works and services and subsequent legal agreements will be delegated to the Strategic Director. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. Now, can I call, are there any questions, please?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm looking at page twenty-five of the paper, section eleven-point-two-one, which states that a fare monitoring fee is available as part of the section one-oh-six agreements for each installation. Where are these fare monitoring fees to be found, please?
Councillor Porter?
I'm answering some of these questions because the paper is on behalf of both Cabinet members. So the fare monitoring fee is not in this paper, it's part of the arrangement that's going to be made with PUSH. So you're talking about the fare monitoring fee for the independent companies?
About third-party mitigation providers, this is a central term.
Yes, and I appreciate your tenacity and concern on behalf of residents about this. But this paper is about releasing the nine hundred thousand pounds for the HRA rather than specifically the other areas in the, in the paper. If you notice, that's what the Cabinet decision is about, it puts those in context on that page, just to explain that there are other matters which are going to be examined further. But I can assure you that the decisions you're seeking are absolutely imminent, but that at the moment, I'm not able to share that information tonight because it's commercially sensitive. But I can assure you that it's very, very imminent and that you will be informed.
Councillor Bolton, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You'll find no quarrel from me about this scheme, I think it's an excellent idea. I think we're delighted that PUSH are providing the funding for this. One can only assume it's trickling down from the previous Conservative government, but maybe I'll be corrected on that, we'll see. Obviously, au pair me en vale, I'm one of the ward councillors there, couldn't be more delighted that this scheme will help preserve the beautiful chalk streams that we're proud to host there and the source of the Itchin. So that's delighted, we're all delighted about that. I've just got a couple of extra questions that, that come from that, I don't know, and I tried to quickly find out whether they were answered in the Cabinet, but I couldn't be there last week, about the timeframe for implementation of this and how quickly this can be, the works can be undertaken, and how quickly the credits will come on stream. Because they're, you know, quite sought-after commodity, it'd be interesting to know how quickly they will come on stream. And then, in terms of, I noticed in the paper, it talks about assessments that still need to be made in terms of overall costs. Do we know, or do we have a good idea, that the funds that are being provided, the nine hundred thousand, should cover the necessary works? Thank you.
I think I'm, I think I'm going to start answering that question, and then we're going to pass over the HRA part to councillor Westwood. So you asked originally, this is my understanding, have those, those decisions been made and how quickly can we access the funds? Yes? Those decisions are literally being made as we discuss here, but this council is obviously making that decision tonight. So I don't think we've signed on the dotted line yet. But once we get going, then it goes into an operative, an operative phase, that's what councillor Westwood's going to answer.
Thank you, councillor Porter.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Yes, in terms of the funding, if we look at the, so once the funding is in place, in terms of actually the timing and getting this done, if we look at the plants that we upgraded last fiscal at Goodens and Northington, the timeframe for getting those done was somewhere between four to six weeks for the actual physical work on site. So what you've got is these packaged water plants, they have an additional tank linked into it, so the outflow from the, the current treatment is then moved into the second tank, effectively, where the nutrients are stripped, and then it goes out through the normal outflow process. So the installation for package treatment works is, is quite a simple process, he says, not doing it. not doing it. And in terms of funding, the cost for doing those two treatment plants was in the region of ninety-seven thousand pounds. So, I'm quite confident that the funding that we're asking for from PUSH will be sufficient for us to make significant progress into the packaged treatment works that we wish to upgrade.
Thank you, councillor Westwood. councillor Horrall.
Mr Mayor, thank you. And this is a real opportunity, clearly, to build on the investment the HRA has already made in some of the plants to date, and our learning, I'm sure, is very helpful here. However, this is a significant fund and we hear this evening that clearly a very detailed plan is being organised behind that investment. There are legal and financial matters, I raised one question, I think at Cabinet, the monitoring of this, and also the overall administration and ensuring that we have the appropriate legal and financial resources in place. Given the amount of money, although clearly we're all very happy to have that funded by the MHCLG, would it be possible that members are advised of the details of the deal in due course, once that's completed, through one of our other Cabinet structures? Thank you.
councillor Porter.
I'm advised that, of course, yes, it will be an internal authority agreement, and so I don't see any reason why it would not be made public. Councillor Todd might have an answer to that that's more certain that, but that certainly might be my intention. Councillor Todd, do you want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I believe the internal authority agreement is a document that will be agreed in public, so, yes. It will almost certainly, I think, be made available on the partnership Southampton website when it gets to the point of agreement.
councillor Bolton, do you want to ask another question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It was actually, I think we just got slightly the wrong end of the stick there, it was more to do with the timeframe to deliver the project overall, rather than the, yeah. Thank you.
I think I'd struggle to answer the total timeframe for the entire project because I'm not close to the actual funding and grant side of it and the setting up of the procedures. Physically, in terms of, once we've got the approval and got the mechanisms in place to upgrade those plants, it's a fairly quick process. I say quick, there's some complexities with a lot of these plants because of access and all sorts of other difficult issues that I'm aware of, but, you know, the timeframe is not going to extend into years or anything like that, in my opinion.
Thank you. councillor Cremoisen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Now, this might be a slightly pedantic question, but I note we're approving, we're being asked to approve an HRA capital budget spend of nine hundred K to implement works and it's funded by the, a grant. Ordinarily, we're being asked to approve or approve funding for something where the money is coming from a budget and by definition, when you take it out of a budget, something else can't be funded, so it's about choices. If this is being funded by a grant, am I right in assuming that the net impact on the HRA is net zero?
Thank you, councillor Cremoisen. Yes, the net impact on the HRA, in my view, as the person responsible for the HRA, is net zero.
Thank you, very clear answer. Are there any more questions? Right. Shall we go on to debate, please? councillor Lee, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I fully support the improvements to our wastewater treatment plants and the creation of the mitigation credits. I think it's obviously much needed and it's really good news. One of the concerns that I have and have raised previously is just to make sure that the messaging on this is crystal clear and that people are not, don't misunderstand, that the ongoing nutrient pollution affecting biodiversity and water bodies is not just from housing, but it's from agricultural runoff, poorly sustained private sewage treatment plants, and insufficient progress by the water companies to remove nutrients from wastewater. So, I believe that it's crucial that we communicate that in all we do and work with other agencies to ideally stop and obviously reduce this pollution. So, really, I'm just asking for, as a council, to remember that, and I hope the Cabinet holders who have spoken today will agree with that and we will do that in every possible way in our messaging. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. Right. In that case, I will call on councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. Not got a lot of comments in the debate to actually, to sum up, but one of the questions that came was how quickly would this be done? And of course, each package treatment plant is a package, so it is a site that is, once it's done, it's done, and we just measure the impact of that. And the point about the impact is that the financial impact to our budgets would be nil, but the, and going back to your point about clear water, the positive impact is that our rivers and seas will have less nutrient pollution than they have at the moment, because this water doesn't go back into the rivers directly but goes obviously into the aquifer. I do take a point, and I think we all do, to acknowledge that there are other sources of pollution, and we know that we have been pressing and the government has agreed that the water companies have to do something about that by 2030. But we are acknowledging that there are other forms of nutrient pollution which happens, and which is why the points that councillor Power makes is so well-made, too. And I know that a lot of our district is covered by areas where they don't have mains water treatment, so I think we're forever conscious of that. I know as well that many of the projects that have been done to improve the quality of water by explaining to people and making people aware of what they're doing when they're washing up or using washing powder that has phosphates in it. And also, we know that the farming community has, over the years, reduced their nitrates significantly. So, it is a constant, it is a constant piece of work. It has been acknowledged that this money has come from the previous government, I would say, but it was also, the challenge was set by DEFRA and Natural England during that previous time. So, and I'm pleased to say that nothing has changed and that grant is still sitting there under this government, too. So, and Winchester City Council, as a different party, is actually implementing it. So, it's really good to see that, for once, everybody's on the same side. So, for that reason, I am seconding this paper. Our aims are both on it and we both feel that it's important for people to agree to it, and I can see that from tonight's comments, that's plainly the case. So, I presume that we now move to the vote, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Porter. Yes, thank you. So, is the recommended minute of the Cabinet as set out in the agenda and, sorry? Oh, I beg your pardon, sorry, councillor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, I do not wish to add any further to the debate, thank you.
Absolutely, my apologies. Right. Is the recommended minute of the Cabinet as set out on the agenda and on page four of the supplementary agenda agreed?
Is there anybody voting against the recommendation for us, members? Any abstentions? So carried, Mr Mayor.
Right, thank you. The recommended minute of the Cabinet is agreed. Right, the next item, the next item of business this evening is agenda item seven, which is information for the council. And councillor Pett, I think you have an update for us regarding your work with the South Downs National Park.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Members, in the coming inexorable ground rush to Christmas, I trust you won't miss the opportunity to mark the 16th of December and perhaps raise a glass, it'll be the 75th anniversary of Royal Assent being granted to the national parks and access to the Countryside Act 1949. Although the South Downs is one of the areas originally identified for its potential, it wasn't included in the first tranche. It took until 1999 for it again to be put forward for designation, together with the New Forest. I have to say that this authority then opposed that move, as did several others across the region. Initially, it was proposed to limit its scope to the area immediately around the Chalk Ridge from Winchester to Eastbourne, much lobbying and two public inquiries later. On designation, the park also included the area known as the Western Wield. This is the heathland to the north of the ridge, right up to Black Down, just south of Hazelmead, which, counter-intuitively, is actually the highest point in the park at 280 metres. The heathland habitat is actually rarer than the chalk downs themselves. It's the only place in the British Isles where you can find all 12 native species of invertebrates and amphibians, though I'm still on the lookout for an adder. I remind members that the park has two statutory purposes and one statutory duty. The first purpose is to conserve and enhance the natural beauty, wildlife and cultural heritage of the area, the second, to promote opportunities for the understanding and enjoyment of the special qualities of the national park by the public. Its duty is to seek to foster the social and economic wellbeing of the local communities within the national park in pursuit of its purposes. This council appoints one of its members to the Park Authority for a four-year term. There are 27 members in all, 13, like me, appointed by districts and counties, two parish-elected members from each county, leaving seven directly-appointed members appointed by the DEFRA Secretary of State. Of these directly-appointed members, currently two are resident in the Winchester District. All members are required to represent the authority and not their appointing body, and in that sense, we're therefore more akin to non-executive directors. Designation as a national park by virtue of the 1949 Act makes the SDMPA a local planning authority for its whole area. Previously, the East Hans area of outstanding natural beauty enjoyed the same degree of statutory planning protection as a national park, but the crucial difference is that LPA status gives the ability to plan strategically for the whole of the park, rather than each district or unitary exercising control of its own part. I'm acutely conscious that this remains a potential cause of friction with partner districts, but it's also important to remember that the park's own local plan fulfills a very different function from our own. Winchester City focuses on ensuring a supply of available land to deliver its housing targets, whatever those targets might be. The park, by contrast, has a landscape-led plan, driven by its first purpose, you'll recall, to conserve. It does not, therefore, have a housing target to meet, but remember its statutory duty to foster the social and economic wellbeing of its communities. Of course, its communities have very similar housing needs to anywhere else. Arguably, given that designation can of itself drive up house prices, there is an even greater proportional need for affordable homes within the park. As you'll be aware, the SDMPA is currently reviewing its own local plan, though some way astern of Winchester. The scoping consultation has just completed and a Reg 18 draft is scheduled to be delivered early in the new year. The park commissioned Housing and Economic Development Needs Assessment as part of its evidence base last year. The headlines from this are a need for 350 homes annually across the park, equivalent to 6,300 homes across the planned period, together with 13.2 hectares for industrial use and 5.9 hectares for offices. But that, of course, is only a start point. All of us on the Park Authority are acutely aware of the need for more affordable housing in all its forms, social rented, shared ownership and potentially small local self-bills for local families. The authority will meet to agree site allocations later in the autumn. As recognised in our last meeting, there is, of course, a fundamental flaw in the new government's housing targets. It is not reasonable to expect an authority such as ours, with a significant proportion of its territory inside a protected landscape, to meet a housing target based on its total area. But, members, please be assured that Midhurst is equally conscious of the folly of this anomaly. Its own response to the NPPF consultation has made this point very clearly, citing it as an unnecessary and unhelpful point of friction between the park and its partner authorities. Meantime, as councillor Porter stated during our debate on the Reg 19 plan, we will be meeting with the park's strategic planners next week to explore how best, in the short term, to resolve this imposed difference between us. There will inevitably be resistance from our rural communities in the park to any attempt by Winchester to impose further development on their villages. Our constituents have learned over the past 14 years to appreciate and value the additional protection from unwanted development that being part of the park brings. But, of course, they also recognise the need for more affordable homes for local people. The park maintains a regular dialogue with its parishes on planning with six monthly updates, and these alternate between online sessions, the next in a fortnight's time, and in-person events tailored for each county. Ours, conveniently for me, is usually in the spring in Meonstoke. Members will likely be aware of the arrangements by which the park contracts out the day-to-day work of development control to Winchester under a section 101 agreement. The Park Authority only has 110 full-time equivalent posts, it simply doesn't have the capacity to do this itself, and it's a good revenue earner for Winchester. We therefore have a separate South Downs group within the Winchester Planning Team, which assesses applications within our part of the park against the South Downs local plan. When necessary, applications are taken to the Winchester Planning Committee for decision. The Park Authority still assesses larger and potentially more contentious applications directly and has the right to call in any application at any time. Winchester also delivers the enforcement function. There is a perception from those of our constituents in the park that this arrangement leads to their planning applications being judged in committee by those who live beyond its boundaries and who therefore have no skin in the game. Indeed, of the nine current full members of the Winchester Planning Committee, only two have significant parts of their wards within the park, and this is an area that is perhaps for us to address. Of course, planning is but one of the Park Authority's roles. Within the Winchester District, it sponsors the Winchester Downs Farm Cluster as part of its initiative to support the farming community in delivering coordinated renaturing schemes. The cluster consists of 38 farmers who together manage 9,230 hectares of land and water. They include the Pressore and Holt Estates, part of the upper Itchin, and even the Rames Vineyard at Cheriton. Farm clusters have proved an effective way of getting agricultural businesses onside with the park's purposes and the efficient conduit for the distribution of DEFRA's farming in protected landscapes, or charmingly fipple, grants for appropriate projects. Green finance initiatives are high on the Authority's agenda, and it hosted a groundbreaking green finance summit at Midhurst back in the spring. One of these initiatives is offering companies the opportunity to purchase biodiversity credits to burnish their environmental credentials. First to deforming queue is the video game maker King, who you may know, are the people behind Candy Crush, that game that I'm sure none of you are playing as I speak. They've just purchased 543 biodiversity credits at fifty pounds each from a project on the Iford Estate in East Sussex. The park also acts as a broker for nutrient credits through several large schemes, two of which are within our district. A small group of Hampshire SDMPA members is also working with other agencies to try and secure greater protection from the Meon, which, unlike the Itchin, has no statutory protection. Indeed, I'm conscious that I'm overdue an update to members affected on that work and will arrange a team's call in the next few weeks. A brief update on the leadership of the Park Authority. Members may know that Trevor Beatty retired as its first chief executive at the end of 2023. A recruiting exercise in the first half of the year generated 66 qualified candidates. This was whittled down to a shortlist at the start of the summer and and Sean McGeeva was appointed at the end of last month. Sean is currently the senior civil servant at DEFRA, responsible for protected landscapes, including national parks, and will take up his new role in November. Finally, I should also mention that the last government's early birthday present was amending the 1949 Act to strengthen neighbouring authorities' obligations to the park. In all decision-making, we now have to ensure that we further the purposes of the park, not simply have regards to them. How that plays out remains to be seen, but it's already been effectively cited in a licensing application in Winchester. Mr Mayor, I'm very happy to take members' questions now and look forward to keeping you all informed of relevant park activity, particularly progress of the local plan review over the coming year.
Thank you, councillor Pett. Now, do we have any questions for councillor Pett, please? We have 20 men. Councillor Lee, please.
Yes, my question refers to what I call the democratic deficit. And I know councillor Pett has heard me say this before, as has the portfolio holder for placemaking. This is a real concern when, as democratically-elected district councillors, information flows round to parish councils and bypasses district councils. This does not feel good. It does not feel democratic. So I'm hoping that with yourself in place, councillor Pett, we might be able to, with the support of the council, do something about this. This is quite worrying. I did note that in the PID, which I did do, and got my part of the South Downs into the process and marked up what I thought was good and what needed to be done. It talked about community involvement plans. Now, I don't know if this is a new term to me, and I wonder whether that's the opportunity to perhaps use that as a mechanism to perhaps tackle the democratic deficit. So could I ask for that to be looked at? And just to highlight, I mean, when sites are called for in my district by South Downs National Park or planning policy statements are called for, and they go direct to the parish council and the district council is, as I say, bypassed or doesn't even see them, as I said, I think that's particularly worrying. And I just wonder whether, again, we can lean on South Downs National Park for a push system rather than a pull system. We're busy councillors, so when something's happening in our backyard, it goes to committee. Sometimes we miss that, and I don't see it's beyond the realms of possibility. You know, our information is in the public domain for us to be pushed and alert when these relevant planning applications are happening. Thank you.
Councillor Pett, are you able to answer that?
Yeah, thank you, councillor Lee. First of all, on the subject of pushing stuff out to districts. I obviously can't speak for any other district, but certainly for Winchester, I try my best to ensure that on Friday, on the Friday roundups, anything that has come out of the park is put on there. Most of the time, I have to say, it has already been pushed by the park through to democratic services here. If I find anything that's been missed, I sort of manually do that push myself to ensure it gets on there. So as far as possible, I don't think we miss anything. If there's anything in particular that you spot, I will certainly do so. Similarly, on the planning committee side of the House, all South Downs applications do feature on the weekly list that goes out from the Winchester Planning Team. So visibility should be there of everything. And indeed, on enforcement, I think all members get a weekly, or perhaps it's monthly, actually, the enforcement digest of the enforcement cases that are currently either open in their wards or have been opened recently or have been closed. So you should get three sets of things there. On that particular questions of community plans, I will get back to you on that. I can't give you an answer off the top of my head, but I will ensure I get back to you this week.
Right, thank you councillor Pett. Councillor Lernie, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to very much thank councillor Pett for his roundup of the issues around the national park and its relationship with the district. Rather than playing Candy Crush, I was actually checking my recollection of the decisions we took in the past, and I was actually on the cabinet that objected to the formation of the national park, or at least to Winchester's inclusion in it. And I have to say that the issues we had then, which included the democratic deficit that was brought up by councillor Lee, have very much played out into reality with increasing house prices and that shortage of affordable housing that councillor Pett mentioned. My question is, do you know how many affordable houses have actually been built in the national park over the past few years?
Councillor Pett, please.
Off the top of my head, no. I know that there were 100, I think it's 176 completions last financial year across the park, not just affordable, but I can certainly get that figure for you easily and get it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Councillor Wallace.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to follow up on a comment you made earlier about the planning. Really appreciate the fact you make sure that the general documentation is pushed round in those weekly meetings, but there are, I can attest to the fact, there are still problems with planning. I had a meeting with planning, I'm not going to go into details, on one particular planning application with the South Downs officers, because it was being dealt with by the South Downs officers. And at that meeting, they agreed, they said, well, it's going to go to a committee, and we will tell you, councillor Wallace, when that committee's happening. Well, it happened last week, and I found out afterwards. Nobody told me about it. This system is not working. So I would ask you to please go back to South Downs and get us a system that actually works.
Councillor Pett, please.
Thank you for that, councillor Wallace. Well, as I said earlier on, councillor Porter and I are meeting with the director of planning and some of his team next Tuesday, so we will bring that particular point up. And I do know which case you're thinking of, and we will ensure something is done in the near term.
Thank you, councillor Pett. Councillor Bolton, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you, councillor Pett. I am a big supporter of the work you do there, as you know, and grateful for your representation at South Downs National Park. I am, as you also know, frustrated by the democratic deficit and participated in the online review. And when it came to the PID review, the Appendix C, Cooperation and Alignment Strategy, lists specific consultees. And district councils and ward councillors are not part of it. And this, I think, just sort of underpins a problem with the South Downs National Park, that they don't really entertain us as ward councillors and our opinions. And that frustrates me. What equally frustrates me, and this is no criticism of you, is that you're in the know and I'm not, and we're in the same ward, and it's predominantly South Downs National Park. And that really bloody irritates me. Pardon me, Mr Mayor. That irritates, as you can well imagine. I'm just being honest about it. And I wonder whether part of the solution is more, if we can't have them open up their books and think actively about how they repair what we see as a democratic deficit, maybe they just don't see it. Then if we approach it slightly differently and rotate around annually the ward councillors, those appointments on the South Downs Park Authority, then that will increase representation throughout this chamber. But I can't deny it frustrates the bejibas out of me. And they don't seem, or there doesn't appear to be any noises coming from them, them being the Park Authority, that they see that there's this problem. And I just wondered if you could just comment on that maybe. Thank you.
Councillor Pett, please.
I think the issue you bring up goes back to the 1949 Act and how national parks were set up by statutes. And as part of that, they were deliberately set up as the local planning authority for their area to sit alongside and be an act in the place of the tier-two authority that still is there. So to a great degree, we're sort of fighting the white, as we would say in the military. That's the legal framework under which the park was set up. Similarly, each member of the Park Authority is appointed for a four-year term, again, by statute. That is the law that sets them up. So, you know, we may not like many aspects of how the park or any other national park is set up, and I think colleagues in New Forest District might have even stronger views than our own on that one. But we are where we are, to use that cliche, and it all goes back to that 1949 Act.
Thank you, councillor Pett. Councillor Horall, please.
Mr Mayor, thank you. And thank you, councillor Pett, for your very informative session. And as a result of the constitutional changes, it's a great opportunity for all members to hear about an important partnership that we have. I'd like to echo the same issue, the democratic deficit is stark, actually. And residents, I'm sure, elect all of us, thinking that we can represent them. The reality is that your job description is different from ours. I'm in a ward where I don't really have any areas that touch the national park, but it is different, and I don't think people realise your level of involvement and influence is as restricted in certain areas as it is. I think that message should be clearly made to the South Downs National Park, because we are carrying a burden as a consequence of having 40% of our district in their area. And that is because they have, as you said earlier, driven up prices of homes, and that's impacting the formula when it comes to the housing calculations for us. So I'm hoping that you will impress upon them their influence that is not actually terribly helpful, and given, as you know, we've had to reduce the number of houses in the Reg 19 plan that they're committing. I'd like to follow up again on the affordable housing and say that we know that affordable in many villages is a crucial element, and it's not any different in villages in the park than it is in other parts of the district. We know the numbers in this area are absolutely minuscule. And so a question that you might ask in your meeting is what are they going to do to address that need, a real need for rural communities who want to continue to thrive? And whether they are prepared not just to put a comment into the MPPF but actually make a stand about how districts are being treated adversely, New Forest likewise and others, by the way that these calculations are made and their lack of requirement on them to provide any support for housing need. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Pett, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think the key point here is that the South Downs Park Authority in its MPPF response has made exactly the same point that you've just made and that we made in our last session on the Reg 19 plan. It is simply not logical for districts that have a large chunk of their area within a national park or other protected landscape to have their target decided on the whole of that area. That's just nonsensical if in another part of the same document you say that there should be no housing targets on protected landscapes. It doesn't work. Now, certainly, I'm sure our own response to the MPPF will say that very loudly and very clearly. As I say, Midhurst's response and every other national park's response, so I'm told, is banging that drum as well. And they're looking for, the National Parks England, which is the sort of trade union body, if you will, for the national park authorities, is pushing the government to give a totally clear set of guidance for how protected landscapes should be treated, and moreover, the portion of tier-two, other planning authorities' areas within the protected landscapes should be treated as well in terms of housing targets. In terms of how those targets are calculated, the parks are also saying that they should be calculated on the basis of current stock, not value, to exactly meet that point of affordable housing demand.
Thank you, councillor Pett.
Thank you. I'm just going to add a little piece to what councillor Pett has said. And first of all, I'd just like to say I appreciate the efforts councillor Pett is making to update us. And I think it's about don't shoot the messenger, really, isn't it here? I really want to make sure that people understand that actually by being the appointed member, councillor Pett is somewhat limited in that ability to act on both sides, which is why I'm really pleased that he's joining me and we're going to meet to have the discussion about this very point and several others next week. And to be part of a conversation which continues. We haven't, I suppose, this, in a way, the Reg 19 and the whole local plan issue has brought this to a head. I don't know about all of you, but I sign up to the national park letters, the newsletters. They come frequently. I'm often really inspired by the environment and the events and think, this is amazing, we've got it in our district. And it's a real valuable part of our district, and we mustn't end up in war with a park that's actually a valuable part of our district. So this is a constructive conversation we're hoping to have, and I'm really grateful for councillor Pett for coming with me to that meeting. I think it would be really helpful. But meanwhile, don't just wait if you have got a conversation that you need to have with either the National Park Direct or our officers. Contact them, have a conversation on the telephone, oh my goodness, on the telephone. And perhaps we can find a way through this until we resolve this matter. I completely agree, it does feel very odd that we have full control over what's going on in our own district in planning, but there are lots of other places where we have the conversation that's going on about other matters. And so for me, it's not just about planning, it's about all sorts of other matters too. I hope that that reassures you that this is something that we have taken very seriously, I take seriously, and I know councillor Pett takes seriously too.
Thank you, councillor Porter. I think we've got time for one more brief question, please. Councillor Godfrey.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you councillor Pett for your briefing. It's very welcome that we now have an outside body reporting back to the council. You are in a very difficult position, as you made clear, that you're not allowed to represent your own ward or your own district when you're a member of the authority. But you expressed some views of the authority, I believe, tonight in two matters. One over the question of the funding, that Winchester made a nice little earning out of a park authority. My recollection from when we negotiated the last deal five or six years ago, when the Park Authority unilaterally reduced the amount they were going to pay, the fee received was about 20% below the actual... the fee received was about 20% below the actual cost before the cost of enforcement was added. So far from making a nice learner for Winchester, it costs a significant amount to look after the planning part of the park. And I wonder if you'd spoken with officers here about that shortfall. The reason we accepted that, as part of the cabinet at that time, was because we had elected members able to decide what happened across our district in the park area. Whereas if we gave up the right to administer planning within the park area, the park authority, which has no elected members, people elected by residents of this district on that authority to represent them, would then act without any input from residents. Do you think there is any openness to the involvement of elected members representing the views of the residents of this ward in the planning process? If the park authority did take on responsibility for planning?
If I could ask you to answer that last question, councillor Pet, please.
In two seconds, yes. I'd say two things. First of all, the deputy chair of the South Downs Planning Committee is a parish member elected by the parishes of this district. Now, I realise that doesn't satisfy the full points you make councillor Godfrey. But again, I would say there are, you know, two sides to everything, aren't there? It might be argued that there is a democratic deficit in a majority of Winchester members who live or whose wards are outside the park taking decisions on wards matters inside the park for which the South Downs Park Authority is the LPA. As I say, it originally goes back to the 1949 Act when seeding control of planning was one of the key planks of setting up a national park in the first place. And that goes right back to the mass trespass on Kinder Scout and all those things back in the 1930s. Now, if you wish to argue that now, 75 years on, it is time to readdress that, fine. But that is not a matter for us, that is a matter for central government because of course, policy would apply to all of the national parks in England certainly.
Right, I think we'll have an end to the questions now. Those of you who want to ask questions, can you email councillor Pet? And no doubt he will give you a very lucid answer. And thank you councillor Pet for standing up to what's been a bit of a cross-examination. Right, members, the next item of business this evening is agenda item eight, changes to committee membership. Mr John.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've been notified of the following change to memberships of committees. For the Economy and Housing Policy Committee, councillor Murphy is to replace councillor Scott. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr John. Right. Agenda item nine is questions from members of council. And members who've submitted questions will be invited in turn to either read out their questions or refer to these as set out, which will be in the order they are published on the council's website. A reminder is that our procedure is that the questioner can ask only one supplementary question and should indicate accordingly. And the time allowed in our procedure rules is 40 minutes for questions, the answer and supplementary. So what I'll do is ask you in turn to ask you your question and the cabinet members will respond. Can I ask if any supplementary questions are succinct and to the point? And as a reminder, written answers will be submitted to the questions submitted on the website within the minutes. Question one is from James Batho.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As the question's short, I'll just read it out quickly. To the cabinet member for climate emergency, how do the recent decisions to invest in food waste trucks and converting park and ride buses to run on HVO, help Winchester City Council achieve the plan to go greener faster? Thank you.
councillor Lernie, please.
Thank you. Thank you for the question councillor Batho. The move to hydro-treated vegetable oil for both our existing waste vehicles and the park and ride buses has enabled a cut in the city council's scope three carbon emissions of over 1,000 tonnes per year. It is estimated that recycling food waste will cut the district's carbon emissions by 1,900 tonnes of carbon dioxide equivalents per year. Using HVO and ensuring a start of rollout next year rather than risk the extended lead time for electric vehicles will maximise the carbon saving achievable over the lifetime of those vehicles. So the move to HVO is a good example of how taking pragmatic decisions now is enabling significant reductions in the council carbon footprint in the short term, rather than waiting for the ideal solution which may take years and significant extra funding to achieve.
Do you have a supplementary question councillor Batho?
Yes, Mr Mayor. I'd just like to ask the cabinet member to comment on the feedback from the suppliers involved in this conversion of any sort of implementation that's taken place. Thank you.
I'm very pleased to say that we've had very positive feedback from both BIFRA and Stagecoach. Maybe slightly too enthusiastic about staying on the HVO rather than electrification, but it's been a very positive move.
Thank you councillor Lernie. Question number two from councillor Lee, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The council recognises the importance of expanding renewable energy alongside energy efficiency improvements. And there is a significant value in community and locally owned energy to reduce grid pressure and accelerate decarbonisation in the district and for the council. With government's commitment to double onshore wind capacity by 2030 and the council's ambition for development of a local energy area plan, it is crucial to explore opportunities for community energy and even regulatory changes to maximise local benefits for wind and community energy opportunities. So my question is, does the council agree we need to urgently pursue options for a fast-track approach for the development of onshore wind and increased community energy opportunities in the district, including lobbying for regulatory changes, exploring new council investment and consulting with potential community energy partners to ensure direct local benefits? Thank you.
councillor Lernie, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In line with the council's greener, faster priority, we are aiming to accelerate the pace of the development of renewables of all kinds in the district and recognise the positive impact community ownership and community benefit have for the public support for schemes. The council continues to look for opportunities for renewable energy on our own land and buildings and will work with community energy partners where this is appropriate. Our Regulation 19 Local Plan, currently out for consultation, has policies which are designed to support the expansion of renewable energy in the district while being technology neutral. However, most of the potential for wind is in the area of the district covered by the South Downs National Park. And we will look for opportunities to influence their planning policies. Nationally, we are going through a period of rapid policy change with a new national planning policy framework on its way and a government which is making very positive noises about onshore wind. The council will be supporting changes to the NPPF with regard to onshore wind and asking for further guidance to be provided to give both councils and potential operators certainty about what should be permitted. With the changes coming down the line, I have suggested to the chairman of the Health and Environment Policy Committee that looking at the opportunity changes to the policy environment give for expanding renewable energy in the district may be a piece of work that the committee might want to add to its work programme at an appropriate time.
Thank you councillor Lernie. Danny Lee, a supplementary?
Just a very quick one. Can I ask that as we're starting with perhaps a new clean sheet for the local plan very soon, that we consider supplementary planning guidance documents, technical advice notes and providing clear guidance to the applicants and to the communities on how best to take forward different community energy partnership models and plans? Can this be done?
councillor Porter may want to contribute to this. Certainly, my view is that further technical guidance is going to be needed. Ideally, that should come in the first instance from government and then be given a local context by us. But councillor Porter may want to add more.
I think, thank you councillor Lernie. We have already explained that supplementary planning guidance won't be in its form in the new process. But certainly, technical advice notes would be relevant. Next week, we're having conversations and training about landscape. I think it's next week. And that is also a very, councillor Lernie and I have discussed this. And the landscape is still a very important part of consideration. So it has many different facets to that technical advice. And certainly, that meeting that we're having next week, your briefing, will be a good starting point for us to have those discussions.
Thank you councillor Porter. Question three, councillor Clea.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Question to the cabinet member for climate emergency. Please, may I ask, when are the new parking machines in Wickham Square to be installed? As the current ones are currently continually out of order. And could I just add that today, they all broke down again? Thank you.
Thank you councillor Clea. I do apologise for the length of time this has taken. And I do appreciate the unreliability of the current machines. The current programme is for the installation of new machines to take place in Wickham and the park and ride car parks from the week commencing the 23rd of September and to be complete by the 1st of October. The new machines will take card payments, which should improve reliability going forward.
councillor Lernie, supplementary, councillor Clea?
No, I don't, thank you, Mr Mayor. But just thank you and fingers crossed, thank you.
Question number four, councillor White, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So, access to arts and culture has many benefits for our rural villages, not only in improving wellbeing, but also in providing a sense of community and...
We know, as you've said councillor White, that the cultural and creative sector provides a really significant contribution to our district's economy. In addition, we know the transformative power of culture, providing a sense of belonging, encouraging connections, improving wellbeing and also can be used as a tool to help tackle difficult issues. This strategy has brought together a number of very diverse groups of organisations, from those delivering arts and culture to businesses, groups and individuals. They have really taken ownership of the development... Right, okay, okay. So, just to recap, the strategy brought together a very diverse group of organisations and they've really taken ownership of it. So whilst it was the city council who took the lead in gathering the information, getting together all the stakeholders for the strategy, we recognise that we cannot and should not lead when there is such an amazing array of expertise in this sector already. The strategy has been a real team effort and it's a partnership working at its very best. It's owned by the sector as a whole and isn't just a city council document. Of course, we have a role going forward, but it is one of an enabler, helping to support and champion culture across our district. And importantly, it can be used by our partners within the sector as a lever to attract much-needed investment. One piece of work which the council carried out during our investigations was to map our culture offer, including venues such as village halls, as you've mentioned, and locations where events and festivals can take place. And I'm very pleased to say that as a result of the Rural England Prosperity Fund, many of those halls across our district benefited by improvements such as improved staging, the installation of ground source heat pumps and solar panels, including other EV charging in car parks and that kind of improvement. All these improvements make our village halls more attractive to organisations wishing to run events, which in turn benefit the providers with increased bookings and lower energy costs.
Thank you councillor Thompson. Do you have a supplementary, please councillor White?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor.
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. So just quickly, are there any ongoing focus groups? I mean, there's about three village halls in our area that have said they would, you know, like to increase this kind of thing and would be interested in taking part in some kind of focus group.
Much. Each of the strands of the cultural strategy, and one of them is young people and education, are meeting as the group. And if you have the names and addresses or the names and contact numbers of those people that would like to be involved in that particular group, please forward them either to me or Emeline Hickman at the city council, who will be delighted to add them to the group that is meeting on those subjects.
Thank you councillor Tom. Question five, councillor Power, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Could the cabinet member kindly advise on the performance of the garden waste collection service from inception in terms of bins paid for and tonnage collected?
Thank you councillor Power. The garden waste service started in February 2021 and just over 22,000 bins were sold in the first year. Since then, the popularity of the service has grown. And last year, we had 23,338 bins sold. And we are on track to significantly improve upon that again, with 23,592 bins sold so far this year, our highest number ever. In addition, we have seen a switch to larger bins, demonstrating how residents value the service. This has seen a corresponding increase in the amount of garden waste collected. And whilst weather and how much the growing conditions vary has a significant impact on the tonnage. In the year 20 to 21, 6,297 tonnes of garden waste were collected. Whereas last year, there was 7,324 tonnes collected, a 16% increase. In the first four months of this year, we collected 3,274 tonnes of garden waste. While in the same period last year, the previous most productive year, we collected 3,007 tonnes. So I'm very pleased to say that we are on track to collect more garden waste this year than ever before and from more subscribers.
Thank you, Kelsey Lerni. Secondary councillor Power, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. May I ask if there is a way of comparing the amount collected now we have the collection service versus the amount collected at the Hampshire County Council bring sites that we had beforehand?
I am sure we do have that data, but it will take some digging out, so I'll have to inquire about that for you.
Thank you councillor Lerni. Right, question six from councillor Godfrey, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. If the government do remove single person discount for council tax at the Autumn Statement on the 30th of October, how many Winchester pensioners would probably be affected?
Councillor Cutler, please.
The city council holds information on the number of single person households for council tax purposes, but does not keep records of the age of those paying council tax. So currently, there are 17,301 one-person households, 29% of the 58,576 council tax dwellings in the district. Census data at March 2021 shows 51,716 households in the Winchester district, of which 14,331 were one-person households. And those over 66, there were 7,280, which is 14.1% of the total. Properties liable for council tax are not the same as households for the purpose of the census, but the figures are broadly similar in that the census figures show 27.7% as one-person households and our council tax figures show 29.5. So we can extrapolate on that basis that slightly more than half, 50.9% of single person occupants are aged over 66. And a best estimate would be that the number of Winchester pensioners receiving a single person council tax discount is in the range of between 8,000 and 9,000 people.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Councillor Godfrey, a secondary.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you to the portfolio holder for a very reasonable answer. Some will remember Patrick Davis, when a councillor, regularly reminding those of us here that while the average wage for working age residents in Winchester is well above the national average, the average income of all residents, including pensioners, is around half that national average. Now about 18,000 pounds a year. Historically, many pensioners are reluctant to claim the financial support to which they are entitled. Now, if the government do go ahead with this change to the council tax system and remove single person discount, what steps will the council take to provide additional support to the most vulnerable in our community?
Councillor Cutler, please.
As councillor Godfrey is aware, this is purely speculation at the moment about what will happen in October. We will have to review the council tax reduction scheme anyway, regardless of what happens, simply because there have been one or two changes in the rules. And I think that will be the starting point for looking at how we deal with this, along with as we regularly do review the council tax hardship scheme. So I think initially on that basis, that would be my thinking of how we would approach it there. There are other questions coming in terms of the more broad problem of the winter fuel payment. And I think the two things will need to be linked if that decision is taken. Given the absolute numbers across the district, which is, you know, I was surprised at how high a figure that was. Close on 30% of households are single person households and receiving that 25% discount. There will be hardship not only for pensioners if that was brought in. So I mean, I think we will need a very broad assessment of how we can approach that. But obviously, it will be a very high priority for us.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Question seven, councillor Wallace, please.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Mayor. Please, can you advise on Winchester council's plan for supporting North Whitley development going forward? In particular, how long the council plans to retain a North Whitley implementation officer? As you know, North Whitley recently passed the milestone of 1,500 properties occupied of 3,500,000 total. Thank you.
Councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. As you rightly highlight councillor Wallace, the North Whitley development continues to move at head pace. And we can see that community growing fast. The governance review has been completed and the Whitley Town Council boundary is redrawn so that the entire Whitley community, north and south, is included. There are only two phases of housing applications left, which Testing it? No. Yes, yes. I think we should get a discount, Mr Mayor. I just mentioned about the governance review being completed and there are two phases of housing applications left. And in line with the original planning agreement, the focus now is shifting towards the continued development of the community rather than the details of planning and construction. This means there will be changes as originally agreed in the planning decision in how the development is supported. So in addition to its planned role running the North Whitley Forum, which will continue to have active city and county council member involvement, Whitley Town Council will now take the lead on community development, accessing the significant S106 sum for community services to fund a community worker and a part share in an accredited safety officer shared with Swanmore, supported by Steve Lincoln's team at Winchester City Council. This is new and vital work. As far as planning is concerned, the two remaining planning applications will be dealt with by the planning team leader who has historically dealt with North Whitley and will continue to lead on planning issues. And because, as agreed at the time of the original planning decision, the five-year period of S106 funding for the implementation officer comes to an end. And so this funding for this role does come to an end in December and is replaced then by the other two S106 sums I previously discussed. So our thanks go to the implementation officer. I know how valued her work has been by local members and the town council. She's also played a vital role in the governance review and has helped us take us to the stage where we can move to a new stage of community support. I wish her well for the future and I hope you do too.
Thank you councillor Porter. Do you have a supplementary councillor Wallace?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. Whilst I appreciate the feedback from the cabinet member, there's still a huge amount of work going on at North Whitley. Many hundreds more homes are expected to be built over the next year. And land is being transferred between different organisations. There's a lot of complicated land transfers still happening. And construction of a new secondary school is going to start soon. A huge amount of background work is needed to support all of this. One of the findings from the recent corporate peer challenge is that the council should have dropped to one district approach to ensure that it's delivering for the whole district and not just for the city. With this background, please can you reassure North Whitley residents that the same decision to cut council support for development would have taken place if this development was in Winchester city?
Councillor Porter, please.
Yes, I can absolutely reassure you. It's a process part of the MDA process, which is to work through the start of the process with an accredited officer. And then as time goes on, and particularly as it becomes part of a development that has a council, in this case, a town council, they would take on that role and move on with those negotiations. I'm actually involved in a, my own ward has an MDA as well. And I know the pain and agony. Sometimes it can feel like, as the development is building out. I know councillor Brooke has also been through this process. It is about the point at which you let that council, that local council fly and make that decision. They start to make decisions for themselves. I've watched it in all three and there is no reason why the town council, who have extreme experience in all of this, can't go ahead and do exactly what they need to do. I can assure you, it's the same whether it's in the further reaches of the district, in the district or just shared with another authority. There is no difference.
Thank you councillor Porter. Question eight, councillor Horrell, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Does the council have a policy to enforce the retrofitting of council properties to improve their energy efficiency? Thank you.
Councillor Westwood, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for the question councillor Horrell. The council is absolutely committed to cutting carbon and cutting bills in our council homes. With a £45 million investment on retrofit planned in the HRA, but we do not believe it is necessary to enforce retrofitting to achieve these goals. If a tenant does not want retrofit work to reduce running costs of their home, that is their decision. Our priority is to roll out the programme at a pace where tenants welcome the programme. We also continue to seek ways to improve the programme, working closely with the residents to get their thoughts and, where possible, adapt the work programme to the needs so that a greater number of tenants choose to get their home retrofitted over time. And the proportion choosing not to have their homes retrofitted goes down. We have already provided retrofit upgrades to over 400 of a tenant's homes. And this financial year, we are focusing on some of our most poorly insulated homes to bring them up to EPCC standard as a minimum. Thank you.
Councillor Westwood. Councillor Horrell, a supplementary.
I do, please, Mr Mayor, and thank you to councillor Westwood for your reply. I think we all know that retrofit has a huge benefit for our residents. And during 2324, we had a target, but we reduced that. And then we actually underperformed at the end of the year against that, despite all of us feeling that this was a very positive step to take. I hear what you're saying about enforcement and I would agree entirely with you. So my question is, what can we all do, given our level of commitment, to ensure that we bring more residents and their properties forward and tempting them to enjoy the benefits of retrofit in a way that perhaps we haven't managed to communicate that as effectively as we might so far? Thank you.
Councillor Westwood, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you again for the question Caroline Horrell. I'm going to answer this in a long-winded way, but it answers your question inside it. And this is that the retrofit targets set in the first quarter of 2023 were for 567 properties to be upgraded within the financial year to March 2024. The upgrades covered nine different categories of upgrade, examples being internal wall insulation, full retrofit of some of our most poorly performing properties, using social housing decarbonisation fund grants to fund ventilation and loft insulation, retrofit-ready properties with four upgrade measures of loft insulation, cavity wall insulation, ventilation upgrades and trickle vents, void upgrades for loft insulation, cavity wall, single and double glazed door upgrades and windows upgrades. To retrofit a property, you need a bespoke plan for that property. And not all properties are the same. You also need to know the structure of the property, including asbestos risks. And most importantly, you need to work collaboratively with the tenant. And that is where we need to go, to work collaboratively with our tenants to bring them into this programme. As you're upgrading their home, for which all measures will involve some level of disruption, that interaction and that collaboration is so vital. Retrofit is not a simple process with a one-size-fits-all that can just be done to the property. The initial target was, as I said, 567 properties. And as you rightly say, we reduced that target as we rolled through the year. We hold monthly retrofit board meetings to manage the programme. And as we progressed through the year, we were learning throughout. And we were constantly revising the numbers based on the experience of carrying out the retrofit activity. Getting this right is the most important thing when you are working in people's homes. Experience gained was not only on the physical retrofit activity itself, but also in the communication and the soft side of the activity of encouraging tenants to allow us to do the work in their homes and work in a way that minimised the disruption on their lives. The final target as we entered quarter four has been revised, was revised to 460 properties and agreed at the retrofit board. At the end of the year, we'd achieved an upgrade in 378 homes. Let's put this in perspective. The previous year, four properties were retrofitted. We massively scaled that to 378 properties in a single year. And I'm grateful for the hard work and dedication of the Winchester housing team for making this possible. I was delighted to have improved the comfort and reduced the bills for 378 of our council homes and their occupants. Looking to this financial year, we're focusing on our worst performing homes who are in the greatest the greatest need of help. As laid out in the cabinet paper on 16th of July this year, £3.25 million of HRA capital expenditure in 2024/25 was allocated using the existing retrofit budget for the retrofit of 21 Swedish cottages, which are in your ward and you know them very well. And I'm also aware of the issues that are going on with those particular retrofits and they are complex and they are massively intrusive. And again, to answer your question in the roundabout way, the way we move that forward so that you say 'don't retrofit' is to work collaboratively with those tenants in those homes to have a solution that will work for them and will deliver the improvement in the quality of their home and reduction of bills that they deserve and we would like to deliver. All these targets, we're aiming at to reach this fiscal and progress, we will manage through the retrofit board, again on our monthly meetings. To reassure you looking forwards, then looking at the future years for the programme, I've asked the officer team to create a medium and longer-term view of the retrofit programme to take us up to 2030 and to demonstrate how we plan to complete all the retrofit activity we currently have in scope by that date. When that plan is complete, I will share that plan with you and with the members. Again, I'm delighted at the progress made in terms of understanding how to run a programme with this complexity and how to work collaboratively with our tenants, and I thank the officer team for bringing us to this point.
Thank you councillor Westwood. Question eight, councillor Tippett-Cooper, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's another question for councillor Westwood. This summer saw disruption caused by antisocial behaviour in the Hyde area of St Barfallamuse Ward and following concerns being raised by residents in the area, a decision by A2 Dominion to close the homelessness services that runs out of Westview House around which the ASB issues were most acute. Council officers worked really hard to address the ASB issues alongside the police and I now understand that the council's housing officers are working hard to plan for the withdrawal of A2 Dominion service. I'd be grateful if the council could confirm whether progress has been made to explore options to support those affected in Westview House to appropriate accommodation.
Thank you councillor. The council, A2 Dominion and Hampshire County Council are working collaboratively with all the remaining residents in Westview to support a positive move on from Westview House before the closure in April 2025. All the residents have an allocated housing options officer who will be working closely with the residents. The council has moved resources around internally and have allocated a dedicated officer to assist in supporting the residents to become tenancy-ready so that they're able to sustain independent living.
Is there a supplementary, please?
Yes, I do, Mr Mayor. So Westview House's closure follows from Hampshire County Council's proposals to remove funding from homelessness services in the county. The county cabinet meets soon to make a decision on this issue and its recent funding consultation shows the majority of consultees were against this funding from homelessness services being withdrawn. Proposals to remove funding from homelessness services by the county councils appears to be a clear case of cost-shunting from the county council to the districts. What representation will this council make to address these proposals?
Thank you. I mean, clearly it is very disappointing that the county council has decided that it intends to remove funding for services to the most vulnerable, single homeless people in our and other districts in this county. However, it's the nature of the decision that is most concerning as it shows scant understanding of the way such services operate and does not demonstrate a partnership approach to the benefit of vulnerable service users. At present, the HCC decision seems to be that there will be a cliff edge in 2025 where funding and services to single homeless people will stop. The district will still have statutory responsibilities to some of those households and future households with similar needs. A more appropriate approach from Hampshire County Council would be to propose a trailing off of funding, if that is what they intend to do, so that districts can ensure households are supported and that alternative arrangements can be developed. I'm heartened that my housing cabinet committee will be considering a report in November to agree a temporary accommodation and homeless strategy and I would hope that at that time we will be able to include positive news from Hampshire County Council concerning their approach to funding removal for single, vulnerable homeless people in our district.
Right. Since we had a delay for various matters, I propose to add on another seven minutes. Is it possible to set the clock in some way before we run out of time? Right. The next question is from councillor Bolton.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Just weeks after the election, the new Labour Chancellor, Rachel Reeves, has announced a cut to the winter fuel payment, which will reduce it by between £100 and £300, money that would usually have helped pensioners with their heating bills during the winter. Only those people on pension credit will receive the winter fuel payment, meaning pensioners with an income of just £13,000 a year will lose out. The new Labour government have chosen to remove the winter fuel payment for around 27,000 pensioners in the Winchester district and this will have a devastating impact on vulnerable people this winter. As a result of this, what will the administration do to support our most vulnerable pensioners through the winter months ahead? Thank you.
councillor Becker, please.
Thank you, and thank you for asking this question. While it is inevitable that the government does need to make tough decisions, this decision will make it a particularly difficult winter for a lot of older people and I note that you have a petition against this on our petition site as well. This council is committed to assisting where it can to provide support to older residents who may suffer as a result of this decision. Citizens Advice remains the highest-funded organisation of this council through the council's community grants programme in recognition of the vital support it offers to struggling households. It offers support to residents across the entire district from its physical offices in Winchester and Wickham and from its hubs held in other locations. It provides advice and support services and continues to adapt its services to meet client demand, with the council's previous cost of living programme helping to bring about an expansion of its outreach services. One of the key services Citizens Advice offers is budget advice and making sure that all residents are receiving all of the benefits that they are eligible for and they provide assistance with what can be very complicated applications. We also, as a council, work closely with other organisations through the council-led Social Inclusion Partnership to ensure that we are aware of issues arising in the community and can help support projects to, can help support projects, sorry, skipping ahead. To address those issues, we expect that this is one issue that we will be following closely in the coming months. In respect of the support provided directly by the council, for tenants in sheltered housing, officers are already carrying out benefit checks with all new tenants and to ensure that they are receiving all the benefits they're eligible for. They will be double-checking with our current tenants to make sure that they are receiving all the benefits they are eligible for. For other tenants and other forms of housing, throughout September and October, officers will be contacting all of those tenants of pensionable age to promote the uptake of pension credit where we find pensioners, and when we find pensioners who are struggling but not eligible for pension credit, we will be supporting them to access free fuel vouchers from the Housing Association charitable trust. For other residents, not our tenants, the council decided to retain the council tax support fund this year, as councillor Cutler alluded to, despite the funding being closed by the previous government, and residents are able to seek support for paying council tax where necessary. The Household Support Fund has thankfully been extended for a further six months but we are waiting to hear from Hampshire County Council about eligibility and the types of support that will be available, but we do have officers who sit with, who attend meetings of Hampshire County Council and hear in that regard, so we will be providing an update as soon as we have it. And of course, as councillor Westwood has alluded to, we have our ambitious retrofit programme, so we are bringing down the energy costs for tenants and delivering low-carbon homes through the new homes programme.
Supplementary?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you for your response councillor Becker. Given that some of the most vulnerable pensioners in the district will face, will be faced with the choice of heating or heating this winter, will the administration further agree never to spend so much as a pound of council tax funds on carbon credits while there still remain homes in the district that would benefit from reduced heating bills by funding better insulation? And can we also agree to bolster the hardship fund? Thank you.
I think the first part of that question falls far beyond the scope of your original question and far beyond the scope of my portfolio, so I won't be answering that. As to the hardship fund, that is a question for next year's budget, it's not something we can revisit at this point in the financial year.
councillor Becker. councillor Brooke, please.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Now that the decision has been made to speed up the local plan process to prevent us being in a situation in June where we have no land supply and open ourselves up to unplanned building across the district, could the portfolio holder please advise of the cost of the, of the cost to continuing and recommencing the data of the new housing numbers straight after versus pausing and including those numbers in this iteration? Thank you.
councillor Porter, please.
Thank you. At this stage, it's hard to exactly compare the cost of a brand-new local plan following the National Planning Framework publication versus the cost of an early review of our current draft plan, assuming it's agreed by the inspector. We should also remember that the draft MPPF is not yet agreed and we don't know how the government will react to the responses they receive in the consultation. If it is agreed, the scale of proposed housing numbers in the draft MPPF means we'd have to go back to first principles in any early review and reconsult and assess the development strategy. It will not be a straightforward or cheap exercise, although the exact scope of what needs to be done versus the current plan and what could be carried over isn't yet clear. So our focus is on driving ahead with our current plan rather than calculating the cost of hypothetical scenarios that actually we have no idea where we are on that. We can say now though that the biggest cost will be those incurred by having a period without an up-to-date local plan. Dealing with speculative planning applications and appeals is not cheap. So while there may not be a huge difference in strategic planning costs, there could be a very major additional staffing, legal and consultant costs in development control ahead of a new, brand-new plan being agreed if we didn't go ahead. So more importantly, moving to planning by appeal would be bad for our district and it would be bad for our cities, our towns and our villages and bad for our countryside. So the focus of our team now has to be driving ahead with the Regulation 19 process. That's our focus and that's how we believe we'll deliver the best outcome for the district.
Thank you councillor Porter. Do you have a supplementary?
Thank you again, Mr Mayor, and thank you to councillor Porter for your response. I'm glad you raised the consultation on the MPPF. I wondered as a follow-up, could councillor Porter confirm her views on the MPPF and give us a flavour of the council's response to that consultation, please?
It's a very long consultation with 106 questions and we have reviewed every single question and provided responses to every single question and those have been gone through with all of us as cabinet and we are going to be submitting it next week because the deadline is next week. And when we've done that, we'll provide you with a list of those answers, very specific answers. So that will be actually published on the DSU next week, so you'll have that full list of the 106 answers next week.
Thank you, councillor Porter. councillor Miller, please, question?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. At the meeting of a council held on 28th of August, the submission of a local plan regulation 19 was approved. It included a site at Tolgate Mill in Bishopswortham as a possible site for adopter surgery, something that is very much needed and welcomed by many residents. However, I understand that this must have been included without the consent of a landowner as at present it seems it is not possible to establish who owns this land. Does the inclusion of this site, which seems to be unlikely to be deliverable, mean that that part of the plan is unsound?
Thank you for raising this issue councillor Miller. As you highlight, the Tolgate Mill site is allocated for employment and residential development in the current adopted local plan, in the current one. So through the production of the new emerging plan that's just gone to Regulation 19 consultation, officers have been in touch with the owner's agent to confirm the availability and deliverability of this site. The proposed submission plan brings forward the allocation but broadens the mixtures of uses to include the relocated surgery for the Bishopswortham practice, which is understood to have outgrown its current location. Its broadening of uses may help to bring the site forward and provide the Bishopswortham practice with a potential option for a new location. As you understand, and as you highlight, it's also the council's understanding that the ownership of the site has changed. Officers are seeking contact with the new owner to confirm the availability of the site and their response to the current local plan consultation. As with all site allocations, it's important to demonstrate deliverability to our local plan inspector at the examination next year and we will aim to do that.
Thank you councillor Porter. Do you have a supplementary councillor Miller?
I'm worried that in spite of your comments, the agents, Tommy Vay, cannot find out who owns that land. So including it makes it highly unlikely at the present moment it can come forward. It also, in fact, is included as an employment land but will reduce, which will be nice, but it mean the current site will in fact, adopter surgery will then be developed for housing almost certainly given where it is. So though it is a bit of an employment land, we're not going to end up with much more employment because the new surgery is going to be a lot bigger than the current one because it's massively undersized in terms of the rooms for patients.
councillor Porter?
Thank you councillor Miller. My understanding is not the same as your understanding and I do know that conversations have been had. So I think, as I said to you, as I mentioned when we had our conversation of the day, we'll keep all councillors in that ward up to date with that as time goes on, but it's certainly, we have had conversations which imply differently from you.
Thank you councillor Porter. I think at this moment, we've had 40 minutes for questions and I've allowed some extra time for the delays and pauses, so I think we'll now call an end to questions. And as such, I would thank you members. And that concludes the formal business of the evening, so could we please ask the officers to stop the broadcast?